Bonner County, good morning. Fun time and business meeting and public speaking and all that kind of stuff. So, we're being given to our invocation.
Would you pray with me? Lord, we thank you for the chance to come to you and pray to you this morning. We are grateful for a God who hears us and cares for every need, both big and small. We want the glory to be yours, Lord. This land was built by men and women who love you. Let us faithfully stand on the shoulders of those who have gone before us in this country, who love this country. Lord, help us that we may not be lukewarm in our lifestyles, but stand courageously and confidently in your most holy and precious word. We pray that we may acknowledge you always in our daily lives and glorify you with all that we do. Help the eyes of the people of our county to be open to your truth. Help them to seek wisdom, Lord. We ask that you pour out your spirit on this county and state to help each of us to discern good from evil, not as the eyes of man, but through spiritual eyes. Remove the scales from the eyes of unbelievers and pour out your love in a way that's undeniable to them. We pray for unity across the nation among all people. Jesus died for all. His sacrifice is for all sins, and he washes everyone clean. Let your love wash across the nation, Lord, and bring peace and revival like never seen before. It's easy to think our nation has passed the point of no return, but we know that with you, Lord, nothing is impossible. We thank you in advance for the work you are doing in our lives and in our, in Jesus name.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we will have public comment. There will be a hard cutoff time of 10 o'clock, and at that time, we will start our business meeting. Ask those that comment to, this will be a question and answer time. It'll be public comment. You can vent, share your concerns, talk about what you want to talk about. If you get unruly and out of order, I will call a recess. And so long as we all act like adults, which I think we are, we will have a good public comment for now. And we have David Mann, first one on the list. And when you come up to the microphone, if you could say your name correctly.
David Mann, I'm in Sandpoint, near Sandpoint. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Williams, for leading us to the point where we can move on to broader ranges of issues that we face in Bonner County, Idaho, and the United States. I wish to address the use by government agencies of alphabet products such as Google Search and YouTube and Facebook or Meta. Thanks to Elon Musk, we are learning that conspiracy theories about banning conservative speech and collusion with government agencies to target conservatives and social media platforms are actually not conspiracy theories. They're true. During the 2020 election campaigns, i-Tech donated money in enormous amounts overwhelmingly to Democrats. This money is raised through tracking and targeted advertisements by following user clips and sites. I'm using information here from observer.com and The Washington Times and focusing only on Alphabet and Facebook, though the pattern of donation seems consistent across, it looks like, a majority of our pre-2016 tech companies. Alphabet during that campaign period donated $21 million. Eighty percent of those donations went to Democrats, seven percent to Republicans. Facebook donated $5.7 million. Eighty percent went to Democrats, 4.3% went to Republicans. In addition, the Zuckerbergs donated $400 million for election expenses. Election expenses might be reread as targeted swing district vote gathering, but my word, no, not The Washington Times or anything. Of that 400 million, 160 of the 2,500 grants with the $400,000 or more, in total 272 million, 92% of the money flows to jurisdictions that Mr. Biden carried. We now have social media platforms that are dedicated to actual free speech consistent with our United States Constitution. Why are we still using platforms that are so politically biased? Why do we shoot ourselves in the foot by providing income streams to the companies that are rabidly against conservative beliefs? I would like to see the commissioners direct IT, or, sorry, or create workshops to investigate replacing YouTube with something like Rumble for streaming video and archiving. Once a new platform is selected, training workshops for staff and citizens to use the transition with lives. Similarly, let us find an alternative for Facebook, if any agencies, such as the Fair Board, are using Facebook. Not only are Facebook's and the Zuckerbergs' donations egregious and partisan, but the use of Facebook requires citizens to create an account. Creating an account to view posts creates an entry to Facebook through the use of Facebook users for the purpose of targeted advertising. There is something stinky about requiring citizens to make money for a highly partisan company just to view government documents. Meeting and agenda notices should not satisfy open meeting laws if posted on a platform requiring an account to view the notices. Finally, I see Google Search, I see Google Search on the county computers that I have access to, such as in the assessor's office. Google Search has long been known to provide liberal bias search results, and using Google Search makes money for a highly partisan company. I would like to see the county investigate using DuckDuckGo as the county's search engine that can be selected on PCs, Macs, phones to replace Google Search. Please try side-by-side searches to see how our perception can be changed by the algorithms used to search the Internet. When you're traveling, do you use Google Maps? Same story. Why do we support the corporations that work diligently to silences? There are alternatives now that promote the First Amendment of the United States Constitution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this week, I'm going to speak about election integrity. And again, it's Rick Ray. I'm from Old Town. And I'm going to read to you an executive summary of a forensic analysis of an election management system that was taken by county clerk in Mesa, Colorado by the name of Tina This forensic analysis proves beyond a shadow of a doubt that our election equipment is nothing more than software that can be modified by hackers behind the backs of our clerks or the citizens. And it reads as follows. This report documents the findings of an examination of tabulated vote databases based on forensic analysis of the drive image of Mesa County, Colorado's Dominion Voting Systems' election management systems server. The findings in this report were prepared by the authors as consultants to the legal team representing Tina Peters, the Mesa County clerk and reporter pursuant to her statutory duties as Mesa County's chief election official. Findings provided evidence of unauthorized illegal manipulation of tabulated vote data during the 2020 general election and the 2021 Grand Junction municipal election. Because of this evidence, which led to the vote totals for those elections being impossible to verify, the results and integrity of Mesa County's 2020 general election and 2021 Grand Junction municipal election are in question. This analysis was performed using the forensic image of the EMS server, which was backed up before Colorado Secretary of State and DBS overwrote the hard drive with the D-Suite version 5.13. So they have seven findings here. The first is there was an unauthorized creation of a new election database during early voting in the 2020 general election on October 21st of 2020, followed by the digital reloading of 20,346 ballot records into the new election database, making the original voter intent recorded on the ballots unknown. In addition, 5,567 ballots and 58 batches did not have their digital records copied to the new database, although the votes from the ballots in those batches were recorded in the main election database. Item two, the same unauthorized creation of new election databases occurred during the 2021 Grand Junction municipal election on March 30th, 2021, followed by the digital reloading of 2,974 ballot records, making the original voter intent recorded on those ballots unknown. In addition, 4,458 ballots in 46 batches did not have their original records copied to the new database, although the votes from the ballots in those batches were recorded in the main election database. The absence of secure, or this item three, the absence of secure hash algorithm on a SHA files for each digital ballot image makes the authenticity in each digital ballot image and the ballot level record for those ballots impossible to verify. The true total vote count in Mesa County, Colorado cannot be accurately calculated for the 2020 general election and the 2021 Grand Junction municipal election from records in the database of the county's voting system. Item five, there is no function or feature on the EMS server that could be executed inadvertently or deliberately by a local election official. That would cause this combination of events to occur, especially within the timeframe that these events occurred. Given the complex sequence of data manipulations and deletions necessary to produce the digital evidence described in this report, this combination of events could not have been a result of either deliberate or inadvertent actions of those officials. Item six, Dominion's installation of the trusted build update on EMS in May of 2021 as ordered by the Colorado Secretary of State destroyed all data on the EMS hard drive, which is a violation, by the way, of federal law, records keeping, including the batch in ballot records that evidenced the creation of new databases and reprocessing of ballot records described in findings one and two above. This destruction of all data by the trusted build is described in the Mesa County, Colorado Voting Systems forensic examination and analysis report. And then the final item seven, the fact that such ballot record manipulation has been shown demonstrates a critical security failure with the DBS EMS wherever it is used. The manipulation would not be identifiable to an election official using the voting systems, nor to an observer or judge overseeing the election conduct, much less to citizens with no access to the voting systems without both cyber and database management system expertise and unfettered access to database records and computer log files, many of which were restored by the actions of the Secretary of State. So, the notion, the notion that our election equipment cannot be hacked is a fallacy. It's just not true. There is not a single federal agency that you can name that hasn't had a cyber hack at one time or another. And you can include DHS in that list. And at this time, I would like to ask if there's a response to my question about the CSO monitoring of our public IP addresses. Is there a reason why we can't stop allowing CSO to monitor our IP addresses? They're a federal agency. They have, they have proven to be untrustworthy. They are putting their fingers on the scale of integrity for our elections, and they monitor our, our systems. What happened to federalism? Why do we have, our founders intended for us to be unique states, not controlled by federal-level entities, and that's what's going on?
You wanted to comment on that?
Yes, Mr. O'Doherty.
After the CSO, I'm after the CSO. We did talk to them, and all they have acted with drive by the methods of the right strong that we identified the neighborhood. They do not have any powers or permissions to actually get into our systems at all. Our IT has actually said, Robin Gruenio is one of our IT people, and he said that since we actually started working with this a few months ago, he's been removed from the reports that he was getting that were actually very cool. He was getting, they were saying, hey, you might want to look at this, you might want to look at that. They never ever could get into our system. And as far as Department of Homeland Security, Mr. Jack, you actually have two series permits from Department of Homeland Security for yourself. You have ISCS number 100 and 700. And then the last time he spoke, he said that he ranked something like number 48 at the bottom of the list, so that puts Michigan, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, Georgia, and Nevada, and Arizona above us. I don't wish to delay the approval, Mr. Gray. I think our system is actually stellar. You also said that a recording from Colorado, which uses Dominion, realize that we don't use Dominion. We use the safest system on the market. We have unique, we don't use anything that connects to the Internet.
We could, we could go on back and forth.
We don't get updates like Dominion does. There's no way for them to actually get into our system to do anything. But for some reason, you want to be more like those other states, and I'm afraid you brought into something that I'm not sure what it is, but it's very disappointing. But Bonner County does not want to be like those states. I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's several things that I think were not factually correct. First of all, I'd like to tell you that it's, it's been discovered, it is well-known that the basis for all the election management systems is built off a single code. All they do is put the finished trim on it with different services. The base code is the same, and it is still a hackable machine. The notion, there are several myths that are flying around. For example, AirGAP. This is a common term. Our equipment is not connected to the Internet, right? It's not, it's just locally connected. Well, this is AirGAP. It has five different radios that can communicate in it, and yet it is AirGAP. You can't, the technology is so advanced, you can't even find the chips that exist in this if you were to put them in one of our computers, our election machines. So, the notion of air gapping is funk.
Let me address that. We don't have those. We don't have Wi-Fi. We don't have Bluetooth. We don't have anything. We don't connect to any of these.
Have you done radio analysis on the equipment when it's running, do you have full time?
It's been certified that way, Mr. Gray. And the only, you don't get updates.
Let me speak, let me talk to certification. The certification of our equipment was, certification standard was developed in 2005, before the first iPhone came out. There's zero cybersecurity testing standard. And it's also worth mentioning, our Secretary of State certifies the machines. There has not even been a budget for testing lab work on these machines until this year. So there's no such thing. We're running Windows 7 machines that haven't had security patches in years, and that's our equipment.
The elections that you're talking about, you have three counts. The last election, you have one. They couldn't be correct. All the data we've tested has been verified, but you will read everything you read on the Internet.
No, I don't. Absolutely not.
So I'm afraid the stuff you can verify on, in hand, physically, through this card, and the stuff you read and hear from other people, you believe, you still don't know how to do it.
Gentlemen, if we could continue this, just so we can give, Mr. Chairman, we give the rest of the public.
I agree, we could go on, I could go on for days rebutting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just hoping that we're able to provide all the public that would like to speak an opportunity to address the board.
Brian Domke.
Before we add the next person, can we give an announcement? If people are texting you guys saying they can't get in, they need to use the link that's on the base page of Bonner County, not the link that's in the agenda, because the link in the agenda was broken. So everybody's texting my phone saying I can't get in this soon. That's the problem.
Morning. Brian Domke, Preach River. So the topic I'm speaking to this morning is an attempt to clarify the intent of the Bonner County Code regarding the public comment. So for background, at the last BOCC meeting, the topic of the intent of public comment period was discussed, and during that discussion, Commissioner Williams described the intent of the public comment period being similar to a town hall or Q and A session. Lieutenant O'Mat described the intent of the public comment period being only for comments from the public, not a dialogue between the public and commissioners. In defense of that position, in defense of that position, there's a sentence from the county code portraying the idea that the county code does not allow for any discussion between the public and the commissioners during the public comment portion of the meeting. Reading this single sentence that was taken from the middle of the paragraph kind of strips the full context of its meaning, and it leads to an interpretation of that sentence that I think was misleading. So for clarification, the full paragraph of the Bonner County Code, Chapter 2, Section 1-200B, reads, quote, "Public comment segment, the purpose for the public comment segment of the Board of County Commissioners business meeting is to enable citizens with issues or concerns which they wish to bring to the Board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on future agenda or possible Board action." As you wrote, read, "The Board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during this session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for Board consideration at a future business meeting." Next sentence, "Questions may be directed to individual Board members for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the Board's attention during this session. The Chair will not entertain under any circumstance comments derogatory in nature toward a Board member, staff member, elected official, or a member of the public." So the public can, per the code, direct questions to individual commissioners and expect to receive answers from the Board member in order to determine if the subject matter being discussed warrants being added to a future meeting or whatever, if I understand the code. In support of this understanding of the Bonner County Code, the Idaho Open Meeting Law Manual published by Attorney General Raul Elaborado's Office states, quote, "Open meetings offer the public a chance to observe the way their government operates and to influence their government in positive and important ways. Those meetings can often lead to distrust of governmental decisions and acts." So in my opinion, in order for the public to influence the decision of our county commissioners, it is necessary for the public to know that their concerns and/or ideas are being heard and understood. When the county commissioners remain silent or simply say, "Thank you," after a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question, it really does not convey to the public that they've been heard or understood. If you find that the current county code is not sufficiently clear on the topic of public comments during the Board of County Commissioner meetings, I respectfully request that this Board add the topic of revising this portion of the county code to address this issue as an agenda item at your next regular business meeting. I have respect for the public and in acknowledgement of the intent of the Idaho Open Meeting Law and in compliance with our county code, I respectfully request that the Board of County Commissioners respond to each public comment by indicating if the information presented was heard and understood, and then indicate if a topic warrants being added to the agenda of a future business meeting. Lieutenant O'Mat, have you heard and understood the information that I've just presented?
Mr., how do I say your last name?
Domke.
Domke. Pardon me. I have heard, and there is an important memorandum that was offered by the prosecutor's office, which I can get you a copy of, that I have upstairs, depending upon the amount of time. And this meeting is known as a limited public forum. And we do take our counsel in regards to how we respond. And I have heard what you have said, and I am willing to pass it forward. And I also believe that we can agree to disagree civilly.
I appreciate that, and I'd be happy to discuss what the county's opinion is. And obviously, it should not conform with the county code, so I hope we can find that what I've stated is actually applicable and appropriate way for the Board to respond. Commissioner Williams, have you heard and understood the information that was presented?
I have, and I would add that this particular section was specifically voted on for a question and answer exchange, and it does apparently need to be revisited on our next agenda since there's a disagreement of actually responding to comments. agenda since there's a disagreement of actually responding to comments. What happened was, a member of the community requested a town hall on a Saturday so that they could ask and receive answers from the Board as a whole unit, and that was denied. And so then the suggestion was presented that we use the hour before the meeting to kind of hold that question and answer. And so on the last one, it was stated that there were not going to be an exchange, which was not what took place, so I will place it on the agenda. There is nothing that prevents a commissioner from answering a question, similarly to if we're standing in the audience and I want to call on someone that has a special interest in a topic and they might have additional information, I can ask that question. I think that's not the root of what our issue is on this Board, and I think that is something that we have to have a better understanding of. But I will put that on the agenda to make it more clear that, are we really going to do a question and answer, or did we just extend the opportunity to make comments to the Board that we don't address? Because I don't think that's what people came here at 9:00 for. I think it was to get answers.
I very much appreciate the intent, and I appreciate also, Lieutenant O'Mott, your desire to reference and respect the code. And I think it's very important that we understand and we look at the full context, if anything we're going to reference in the code and that we're applying it appropriately, and I just want to be sure that we're going to do that, so that we have the right environment for efficient, effective, appropriate dialogue to take place, when and where it can. And right now, I feel like there's confusion about what that is and what's allowable and what's not. I think that should be clarified. Chairman Bradshaw, have you heard and understood what I presented? Thank you.
Kristen. Good morning. I'm glad you're here. I was going to let you say how you say it.
I don't blame you. Kristen Steikett. So, for name calling, I used to be called Stickett-Stikeet. And I don't hold anybody accountable for the person who cut me off and flipped me off on my way here, and I don't hold anybody accountable for any names that I call. So I want to make sure that I do not condone or support any name calling at all. So I just want to make sure for Commissioner Luke in particular, just based on some information that you shared last week towards the end of the meeting, about the last 10 minutes, there's kind of a roll call of names supposedly that you've been called, and that's not representative of everyone. So I want to just be sure that when you are in a position of wanting to respond, that that's not your response, because it's giving the way of more qualitative answers for the question that's actually being asked. So, what I want to say is exactly what Mr. Domke just said. And commissioners are relatively speaking, or maybe even not relatively, very well paid. You are some of the best paid politicians and representatives in current day, much more so than state legislators. And it's just under 100K. This is public information. Anybody can look this up. It's just under 100K, and that's about, I think it's specifically 96K. That's $8,000 a month. So this is a day in and day out job. And I remember Commissioner Luke mentioned, right after you won the election, and I liked this comment, that you were ready to roll up your sleeves and get to work. And I really admired that. That's a work ethic thing, and you were ready to go. You are still a relatively new commissioner, and if you can get past what some people are doing for name calling, which is not me, and anyone, just take this as honest feedback. And if I give feedback in a respectful manner, for all the right reasons and the right intention, it's up to the person to take that feedback as an adult. So at the onset of the meeting, it's really neutering the purpose of this gathering, which is a town hall, which is a Q and A. There's no mandate that a commissioner cannot answer the question. And hiding and shrouding behind legal ease in these codes is not so much disenfranchising to us, it's actually disenfranchising yourselves, because at the end of the day, you guys are representing, you were voted in to represent us. This is, you're paid to do work, moment to moment, day to day, week to week, month to month. And it's important, for example, what are we paying for? It's important, for example, when you're giving your district updates, number one, give one. And Tricia, two weeks ago or last week, did ask for a district update from her seated commissioner, which in this particular case is Commissioner Steve. I thought that was a good point. I think that's fair to expect that, based on, I am paying all three of y'all. Okay? Even though I know who my seated commissioner is, that's Commissioner Luke, based on my address, I'm paying all of y'all salary. Okay? So district updates from everyone. Number two, district updates are not just like a local news feed, which is helpful, but I know where to go to find information. I don't need to be told what's happening in, what bills are being passed from my commissioner. It's helpful, you can mention that, but it really should be about what you're garnering from your district, what your goals are, what you are accomplishing, or who you are leveraging to help accomplish those things. Okay? I do happen to hear that from Commissioner Williams. I think this would be a great takeaway from the other two seated commissioners. This is constructive feedback, and I do appreciate you listening. And I can tell that you are, and I truly respectfully say thank you. So let me continue if I may. The other basic reasonable, consistent expectation is that representation requires a conversation. Okay? I can't inform my comment or where to go next if I have no feedback from you. It's a two-way street. Or anyone else who's standing up here on the microphone. That is a basic reasonable expectation, especially for the salary that is paid for you guys, which is $8,000 a month. And I'm now going to officially, for me personally, I'm going to refer to the fairground topic as a fairground game, because several thousands of dollars of sweat equity has gone into this topic. And I have heard logical fallacy after logical fallacy, and it's very complicated reasoning. And if one reason doesn't work, another reason is given. Urgency, that was dismantled, very simply. Next one, I don't want to raise taxes. That's been dismantled. So all of these reasons that have been given for what Commissioner Luke wants to see for the fairgrounds have been addressed multiple times. So it's getting more and more convoluted and complicated, but I know that that complication and that convoluted research is also costing us money. And it's curious to me that this is in lockstep with exactly where Commissioner McDonald left off. I do know you are in current communication with Dan McDonald. You told me that last week, and that was just by phone alone. It's in person, it's emailed, it's phone, it's not only frequency, but it's also substance. He himself also says that he's in contact with you. This is not a secret, and I read the screenshot last week. It's not so much, Luke, what it is that you say, but in order for us to know what we voted for, and who we want to vote for in the future, it's crucially important that you let us know your thought process, how you get from A to Z. I like your mom as well. Solid advice about Zoom. And that I stand behind 100%. This is not about your mom. This is about the logic of how and when and why you go from A to Z. And if you're not answering any questions whatsoever, we will never know that question. It's not a bad thing to be an enigma, but not if you are an elected official. There should be no mystery here. Okay? So, that's all that I have, and I really do appreciate your time. Thank you kindly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I offer a couple of responses?
Yes, you may.
All right, in regards to the fairground game, I'll address that in my commissioner's response. But in regards to Zoom, Ms. Kristen, I don't want to butcher your last name. A significant reason why I changed my vote was because of the legislature, which I brought forward. And actually, it was our Senator from District 1, Scott Herndon. Scott Herndon made some comments, which I 100% agree with, which was pretty much in reference to, and I brought this forward at the time of the vote. So conflation between different things is out there. But one of the main points I made was if it is good enough for the legislature, it is good enough for me to change my vote. And that was the primary concern. There is no enigmatic logic. Our powers as commissioners are delegated to us through the Constitution. And this is an observation. In regards to county commissioners, it is only for the election purposes that we as candidates must reside within a certain district. All three of us that sit up here represent all approximately 51,000 Bonner County residents. You don't have one commissioner. You have a board of county commissioners. And I will continue to follow ordinance, and I will continue to follow the advice of the prosecutor's office, especially in regards to how we conduct ourselves at these meetings. But I would encourage everybody that if they want to have a conversation with us, please schedule something. I will make myself available. I drive across the county to speak with people about issues all the time.
Point taken, very good point. And so I was referring to the boundaries of the district, and the meeting is structured for each person to have a district report. So for the sake of that, for clarity, but yeah, point taken. And also, Commissioner Luke has recently published, perhaps in the newspaper, about doing meet and greets with the community. If I read that correctly, if I read that correctly, you inviting people to do meet and greets?
I'm open to people inviting me, Ms. Kristen.
Yeah, okay.
I go, I meet with people.
Yeah, so meet and greets, yeah, exactly.
I go where the people are.
So where we're at, and this is feedback, and you can take it or you can leave it, but where we're at right now is the campaigning's over, you've won. Meet and greets are just that. They're meet and greets. This is supposed to be qualitative, based on substance. So if I'm paying you for meet and greets, if somebody invites you, I don't know what that means. Is that showing up for coffee and coffee cake? I don't know. To somebody's house, to a coffee shop, and a group of people want to meet and greet, I don't know what that means. I would need that to be defined, but we're past, I think we're well past that point. We're here right now. We could call this a meet and greet. My name is Kristen Steikett, okay? I'm here, I'm meeting y'all, and I'd like some good information. So yeah, greet me, but then what? So the meet and greet seems to be very yesterday, because you won the election, Luke. And the stump speech stuff, not suggesting that you do that, that already won you the election. Okay? So we want more than that, based on what we're paying you for. So if you say meet and greet, then you would need to define that term, because I myself don't know what that means, other than it sounds pretty surface. This is a town hall. This was a fantastic idea by Spencer that everybody agreed to, let's take advantage of it. If it's a one-way street communication, and the same goes among commissioners, okay? Commissioner Williams very consistently has to be solid on establishing that there is discussion in between agenda items or during an agenda item. And I'm very grateful for that, because if she didn't do that, there would be no discussion. So this is also, this also is for us to see how you all interact, for the reason that you mentioned, representing 51K people. So this all comes together. We're on the same page, we're talking about the same thing, just different pieces of the puzzle. I'll leave it at that, and I don't want to be a mic hog. Thank you.
I want to actually give a little bit of a response to what you said. I have a different view of why we come from different districts. It is a big area that you're representing, and the idea of the district is that I'm coming from a specific area in the county, and I should be going back, in a sense, to that area to understand what the issues and concerns are, so I can bring those forward to the seat, which is in Sandpoint. And so it's not realistic to think that one commissioner is going to be able to cover the whole area, so it's kind of defining that area, because, for example, I'm in the District 2, so we're the southwest Bonner County. The issues and concerns of those people are not the same as Sandpoint. So in order for me to understand what's important to that group, I have to go to where they are to understand those issues and bring them forward in the decision-making that happens on this Board. It's not that, for example, you've heard me report out that I've gone to Clark Fork a few times, so I reached out to them to hear their issues and concerns. It's not that I won't go outside of District 2, but it's that I do need to give some focus and attention to the district that I'm coming from. That's why it's a requirement that you're coming from that district, otherwise, it wouldn't matter if we treated it as we just represent all. We are a board, but I need to bring forth specific issues from my area of people. So I kind of differ on why we have districts. I do, and that's, I've been asked a lot, why do I make sure to say District 2? Because I need the people in my district, who I represent, in addition to the whole county, but to know that I'm answering on their behalf as a representative, because that's what it means to represent. So I have to make sure that I'm touching base with my community and say, for example, Old Town has a road issue. Let me bring that here to present it to the county, so I can make sure issues in my area are getting addressed. So I think that we are supposed to be a little bit more specific on the 2 region, and 1 region, and 3 region, for that matter.
Jim Kelly.
Good morning, Mr. President. Jim Kelly, for the record. I would like to address what other speakers have addressed this morning. It's the decorum of both the public and the commissioners. And by the way, just for clarification, there was a reference to what you authored in the paper, you wrote a guest opinion, and you said very appropriately, "If you want to know why I made a decision, reach out to me, give your email address. If you would like me to come and speak to a group about county government, let's make it happen, get involved, attend a meeting, and bring your friend, Bonner County is home." So I hope that clarifies any confusion in that. I'd like to talk about a policy, and I go back to, I go to, in reference, the article from the Bonner County Daily Bee on the front page of the March 24th edition, and it was titled, "Prosecutor, colon, Let the People Speak." "The memo from Marshall," being prosecutor Marshall, dated March 13th, addresses a request from the Board on how it could effectively remove a citizen from its regular business meeting if they were, in the Board's opinion, being disruptive. After another contentious meeting, the Board eventually adopted a motion to allow a one-hour public comment period at the start of this Tuesday business meeting. Marshall advised the Commission to draft a policy, along with counsel, that balances the need to conduct an efficient business meeting with those rights. I would like to discuss the importance of you having that policy. Right now, it's kind of confusing, we come to a meeting. Last week, I watched it on YouTube, close to being out of control. I don't blame the people here, I blame a lack of policy, because if you don't have rules, people will make up their own. They'll go outside any parameters if the parameters aren't set. And you do have to have rules. I'm a person who, as a police officer, I, especially in my, I was temporarily assigned as a community policing, and I handled a lot of very contentious public meetings over crime issues, things like that. And the meetings were generally successful because we could work things out, and that's what it's all about. So like, one of the things that came up last week was, okay, there's one hour for citizen comments, are questions allowed? Commissioner O'Mott said, no. Some people thought, yes. And during that meeting, some commissioners answered questions while basically declining to answer others. That causes confusion among the citizenry. So have a policy on that. I've got some suggestions, whether you take them or not, it's up to you, and I don't need a response to any of them. I'm just going to leave them with you. So regarding last week's meeting, you know, there were people running up to the microphone, making comments, and running, sitting back down, not giving their name for record. Others are demanding to speak again after already giving testimony, and commissioners were making, there was a couple of times where what I saw was derogatory comments. And when I refer to that, I mean, there was some discussion amongst the commissioners yourselves about some name calling or something someone said about one another. Commissioner O'Mott, you referred to Commissioner Williams as "the person who sits to my left." And Commissioner Bradshaw, I believe at some point you also said, "the person who sits to my right." Well, there's two things wrong with that. One is, the person who sits between you, gentlemen, has a name and a title. It's Commissioner Asia Williams, a duly-elected member of this Board, equal to both of you. If you have a reference to a person on the Board, use their name. It's a very simple thing. Also, and I'm going to go in deference to what some other speaker said, what I think the meeting should, some of the parameters the meeting should have. Set individual time limits, such as 3, 5, or 10 minutes, whatever it might be, for individual comments. The reason for that is, you could get a person up here, if you don't have some kind of a rule, and once again, you have to work this out with the prosecutor. rule, and once again, you have to work this out with the prosecutor, and use the, I love the term reasonable and prudent. What's reasonable and prudent? Was it three minutes, five minutes? I believe Sandpoint City Council uses three minutes. And have that. You could get someone up here who could stand here for an hour and read a manifesto. As for myself, I have a standing appointment every Tuesday morning at 10:00 AM that I pay for, and it's a drum lesson. I'm going to be late for it, he's not going to be pleased, and I'm not going to get my full lesson. But that being said, and I don't mean to disparage any of the previous speakers, but something went on quite a long time. And then there were comments back when, you know, there were, you know, Mr. Rosedale getting up and addressing in person. So I would recommend you set these individual time limits, and that you should not respond to the comments. I'm a firm believer in that. I know people behind me will not like this, but here's what happens. Arguments begin. You know, someone says something to you, and I get it, you need, you feel the need to respond, especially if you feel you've been wronged, if someone says something that's not accurate. You want to come back and say, oh, well, wait a minute, no. And that leads to, you know, argument, discourse. Other people in the room sitting here that may be not interested in that topic are bewildered. It's like, why do we have to sit here through this? So don't respond. Just take it, if it's not an agenda item, that's a different story. Later on, you're talking about an agenda, public comment and the agenda item, that's a different story. But for someone like me getting up here and just blathering, you know, a statement, you shouldn't respond to me. Also, I know you provided a sign-up sheet. I didn't see it this morning. I was here somewhere between 9:45 and 9:50, and I looked for a sign-up sheet, I didn't see it. Until you started reading the sign-up sheet, I didn't know there was one. I should have been like with the first or second speaker. So I would have that sign-up sheet posted with a large sign, "If you wish to speak, please sign up," and take them in order. And at the beginning of each meeting, announce, for anybody who came in a little later who didn't see it, announce that there is a sign-up sheet, and, you know, and the policy about speaking in turn. I would also provide a proper podium for speakers. We had our tech employee this morning get up and talk about this microphone. And when I say a proper podium, I have papers. I would love to set them down on a podium in front of me, instead of holding them up here and jigging them around. I would have a podium, and I've seen this at city council in the city where I used to work, there was a very nice podium. It was, you know, the right height for most people, had a place where you could put your paperwork down, and the good thing is, it also had a gooseneck microphone holder. And a gooseneck being this very, you know, you just, you don't have to fool around this thing, you don't have to, you know, run the mic stand up and down, you just take the gooseneck and you quickly move it to whatever height. You know, there were people who were four foot 10, I'm sure people come up here who are six foot six, and from that. So make, you know, something to make it easy. And I would also say, you don't have to do this at every speaker, on the podium, have a sign, a clear sign saying, please state your name for the record. That way, anybody, you don't have to stop someone, say, no, you had to state your name, go back. It just, it makes things smoother, that's all I'm getting at here. And when it comes to the decorum of the commissioners, I would show a healthy respect for each other. Watching commissioners somewhat snipe at each other, and you know what happens. I'm not going to get pointed on that, but you know what happens. And it's like, have you ever been over to someone's home with a couple that you know, and they start sniping at each other? Well, you always do this, and you're, and what do you do? You sit there and you go, I don't want to hear this. You become very uncomfortable, you want to leave. It's not a healthy environment. So I would show a healthy respect for each other. I would refer to each other by your names, perhaps your titles, I don't know if you want to go that far, but at least show respect for each other. The audience will see that, and the audience itself will have more respect for you. Yeah, so what I say is, you know, make sure it's healthy. No sniping, no innuendos, personal attacks are unprofessional, childish, and unpleasant for the audience to witness. So I'm asking all three of you, please don't do that. Treat each other with professional respect, and I mentioned about last week's meeting, and about the person sitting next to you. And quite frankly, if you have, if any of you have a problem, if you find that a commissioner said something about you that's not true, you just didn't like, don't take, don't bring it in here. In slang terms, that's known as airing your dirty laundry in public. And what you should do in that case is, go to that commissioner or commissioners and say, I really, I have a problem with what you said, I'd like to discuss it with you in private. And close the door and have at it. You know, if you want to duke it out, you know, I don't mean physically, but if you want to duke it out verbally, that's the place to do it, not this room. And also, just a couple last things, it's become apparent to me, I believe as well as many witnesses in this room, that there are two members of this commission, and I have to name you, Commissioner Amont and Commissioner Ratchaw, are at odds with Commissioner Williams and Sheriff Wheeler, and some other community members who may have an opinion that differ from yours. I would also ask that you straighten that out. You know, just whatever your differences are, once again, take care of them. Yeah, you can't ignore them, but take care of them in the proper fashion. So in conclusion, I'd like to issue a plea to our current Bonner County Commissioners. Please, number one, stop the infighting. Get together and figure out methods and how to agree to disagree without insults, sniping, innuendo, and name-calling. Show respect for each other in public. I already said that, but I'm driving home a point. Listen to the citizens of Bonner County. When it is blatantly clear that we don't want you to go in a certain direction, and I had to bring this up, I know it's, once again, contentious, such as the campground issue, hear our pleas and consider our stand. I'm really disappointed that this did not make it to the ballot, the advisory vote on that. Last week, Ms. Gunter made a very wonderful statement about, you know, you need people to direct people to campsites. You can't just get a grant and put it in a campground and go, okay, we're all set. No, it's growing government, it's growing employees, there are problems unless you clearly listen to someone like Ms. Gunter, there are problems that will arise that you don't foresee, because presumably you've never run a campground. I've never run a campground. I wouldn't know what to do, first thing. And so you need to know that. So listen to the citizens of Bonner County, as once again, I heard you two gentlemen say, in campaigning, you know, I will work for you, the citizens of Bonner County. So I thank you for your time, I appreciate your, I don't want to, please don't say anything. I don't want to.
Coffee.
Of this?
Please.
Yeah. You may have this one?
This is the birthday.
No.
Today is the, um, the 40th birthday of my first birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. G.
Randy. You got about two minutes there, bud. Make it brief.
Oh, yeah. Don't worry, I'm not going to go nearly as long as the previous gentleman. Randy Stoltz for the record. Mr. Chairman, I rise to respond to the comments of Mr. Gray and Mr. Rosedale, both in this meeting and in last week's meeting, regarding election integrity. I'm a lifelong Bonner County resident. I've been watching Bonner County elections for a half-century now, starting 10 years before I became a proud Bonner County voter. My mother was a volunteer precinct worker in the Sagal-Algoma precinct when I was young, working under the auspices of the county clerk at that time. Sagal and Algoma were still one precinct at that point, they've since divided as our population grew. The system of volunteer precinct workers is much the same today, and our elections in this county could not function without them. They are sworn to impartiality and nonpartisanship. They often do the same job for decades on Election Day. They take their oaths very seriously. In Bonner and Ada Counties, as a college student in the 80s, and in the last 15 years since I retired from commercial fishing in Alaska, I have observed Bonner County election operations closely a number of times, including in the count room, which is right here, the last numbers of years. In 2022, last November, I was in this room from 9:00 PM to 1:00 AM. You can watch behind the rope, you can watch online on the internet, you know, you can watch from home. But our elections, otherwise, are not on the internet, they're firewalled, and they're firewallled to my satisfaction. We don't use Dominion. I can't speak to Mesa, Colorado's, I can't speak to Mesa, Arizona. I can't speak to elections in Texas, or Washington, or California, or Florida, or Massachusetts. Our elections, except for Zoom watchers, are not on the internet, they're firewalled. And I'm satisfied with Mr. Chapin's elections, Mrs. Scott's elections, and Mike Rosedale's elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Okay, it is 10 o'clock, we will postpone public comment, and we will go into the business meeting, we'll entertain, we'll, we'll.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a five-minute recess, please?
Okay. 10 o'clock, I'll call a five-minute recess, so nobody has to watch on this record.
Thank you.
I'm going to go grab.
All right.[1207.23]
I'm going to go grab.
I am encouraged.
Okay, it is six minutes after 10 o'clock and we are out of recess and I will entertain a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda by removing Engineering Spencer Ferguson action item. Discussion decision regarding should parking agreement Bonner County and Panhandle Area Council LLC. This item has not been approved through legal review. I would further ask that we table HR items two through six because of current events until the BOCC is able to schedule an executive session with Louis Marshall.
I'll second the motion for discussion on that second piece. Human re- so, these are the policies that this board voted a two to one to suspend indefinitely. Last business meeting Commissioner Alma made a comment that he needed a legal response. A legal response was given that said, "An attorney wrote these policies that they can't review the work of another attorney and that there's, that the policy should move forward." There isn't a reason to delay for speaking with Louis Marshall. Last week, you indicated that you asked Bill the question. Bill was the author of the email saying, " approve the policy." So, I don't think it's appropriate for the board to remove those items if you choose to not vote for those items and that's your choice to not vote for them, but it is reasonable to put into record the legal opinion once again from Bill Wilson who indicates that the policies should move forward.
There has been a significant number of developments which I am not prepared to discuss with employees and personnel by name. I agree that these items need to be on the agenda, but I would say that, given the number of events and the fact that Mr. Marshall has been out of the country, I'm not asking to table these policies indefinitely. I'm asking the policy to table these items until we speak specifically with Mr. Marshall about a series of events that have taken place in regards to a number of specific personnel, which I am absolutely not going to name their names in this meeting. And I absolutely believe that the severity and the conduct, the allegations, it, we need to speak with the prosecutor. I believe that it is prudent and wise to speak with Prosecutor Marshall because there are conflicting opinions from different folks within the prosecutor's office and I would like to hear from Prosecutor Marshall before I am prepared to vote.
And I, I understand that and what I'm saying is then that should be your vote. What's happening is you're having the appearance of shopping for a legal opinion which is part of what Bill's response is. The person that wrote the police policies is an employment attorney and so the explanation that was given in an email to all of the commissioners and human resources is that you have hired an attorney to write your policies and their background of that individual has been vetted and the recommendation was to move forward. If you have a personnel question, that's different than the policy, but regardless if you as a commissioner do not want to move forward with voting for those, then just cast a no vote, but we don't remove it because you have a, another question that you want to ask. And I also personally don't agree with going from attorney to attorney when we have two attorneys that have repeatedly said these meet employment law standards. So I think it's more reasonable that you just vote not to move forward with the policies, not that it's removed because you want to talk to Louis. I believe his answer is going to be exactly the same. That's another attorney's work in a specialized area of law. They've met the standards of, of employment law. You have already suspended these policies indefinitely and I would actually say if you want that, then you should have to tell us the, last time you said there was a question that you needed an answer to, but you wouldn't tell us what the question was. And this week, there's a personnel issue which I don't know how that changes employment law and the need to affect policies. So my request is, we leave them on the agenda and you vote yes or no, but that we do have to amend for engineering so that I can't, rather than not be together and just vote separately on those two issues and you think you can do that?
I stand by my motion as made and the prosecutor is the ultimate authority within the prosecutor's office and when there are conflicting opinions, I believe that it is perfectly appropriate to actually speak with Prosecutor Marshall. And the series of events that have taken place warrant potentially a one-week delay. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would ask to, to call the question and roll call vote.
So the, the most important issue, the move that Engineering had, the members went up for that and...
To table HR items two through six until the BOCC has an executive session with Louis Marshall.
I would step down from the chair and second that. Roll call vote?
Yes.
No, because we have already received two legal opinions to move forward. There's already conflicting opinion presented to not actually discuss the site and again on human resources. This has been sitting here for almost three months and has gone through workshop and a specialized employment attorney.
Well, before I vote, I'm going to say why. Because of current events over the last several months, personnel grievances, there's a couple of these items on here that I find highly suspicious and I am not willing to improve, to approve one personnel policy change until those issues are cleared up and, and settled. We're not going to muddy the water by changing policy in the middle of a ballot. So, my vote is no. Or, yes, we, yeah. Had to remember the amended agenda, but yes.
So, Mr. I don't know. I actually second his motion originally to talk about it and then he stepped down, I think that was either... Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as amended. Where it's presented now, is that?
Amended.
As amended. Thank you, Madam Corrigan.
I'll second the motion so it can be voted on.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
No, I believe that the items under human resources should have updated policies per legal counsel of two attorneys.
District two commissioner report.
All righty, Old Town Idaho. Roden Bridge has been working very hard on the very lengthy road issues in that particular department. We have to say thank you to our director for working with Ponderay County on this. We are going to have our follow-up meeting for Old Town on June 15th at the Rotary Club office at 4:00 PM. It's going to be a town hall kind of follow-up and it will actually include Roden Bridge from Ponderay County and Jason said that Ponderay County Commissioner is actually also looking to come to that event as well to kind of express their concerns and desires to work with Bonner County. Jason has been very clear with Ponderay that our focus is ensuring that our Old Town residents receive the road care that they deserve and making sure that we have an equitable contract between the two counties. So, I look forward to that kind of follow-up. I know that Weeds is also, we're getting towards, maybe we're thawing out and so Weeds will be going out to look at Old Town with that particular group. So, that will be in, on June 15th. On the, this Thursday, the 13th, I'll be down in Priest River meeting with some Roden Bridge people at 1:00 PM to kind of hear their issues and concerns from the Roden Bridge side there. April 17th, this Monday, is the Planning Commission and Community Workshop with members of the respective boards. Bill Wilson is going to be present to specifically talk about the dreaded topic of spot zoning which comes up a lot. So he's got a lot of information to present on that too. For all those who've been watching the comp plan and have questions, it's a good opportunity to be able to have a dialogue with our Planning Commission, Bill Wilson, and then just other members of the community that have the same issues and concerns. I've built a PowerPoint and sent it back and forth with the Planning Commissioners so that they can kind of approve of the kind of slides that they'll present and that way we can have a structured meeting workshop with the community because from the Planning Commission side, they want to encourage community feedback. From the community side, they want to understand the thinking and thought process of planning to make sure that the information is being communicated in such a way that we can get good information passed through both departments. April 20th, you'll see over on that table there, we have a Spirit Valley Town Hall. So, Spirit Valley is the correct term because it is the district for our voting for that particular area. So I'm the precinct committee person for the Republican Party and the commissioner. So I'm combining those two things. Our agenda is very, very long, so we've got Representative Scott, Representative Hawkins, Phil Hart, we're waiting for him to respond to. We've got elected officials from Clerk Rosedale, myself, the assessor's office is going to send somebody to bring the information to that community, question and answer. There are three hot topics there that are going to get more time. One is, Bonner County EMS is going to have the discussion of should Southwest Bonner County have an EMS station? For those who have had a concern about this topic in the past, it has nothing to do with development on a particular individual's piece of land. It's just the idea of increased calls in the Spirit Valley area. The other topic is, we are going to have a guest speaker in Norm Smanco who is an attorney that we work with a lot with respect to water. Our biggest topic for that area, which I did save to last on purpose, is West Bonner County School District. We have members of school board that are going to come to talk about the levy so that the community can have questions and answers. I've heard a lot of people frustrated about the idea of levy, but this is an opportunity to have that discussion in a broader sense and understand the perspective of the school board meetings. So that is absolutely something I encourage everybody to attend. We have a lot of people that are going to participate in terms of community-wise, so from Sheriff talking about law enforcement to our Bob Howard with EMS Emergency Services. We're going to have our Blanchard Area Radio Group, 7B Politically Activated Christians, Republican Party for the committee as well as the women's side as kind of vendors on the outside of our little area to present what's going on in our community as a whole. We also have People's Rights, Make America Free Again, and then we'll also have Tactical Homeopathy by Sarah. So there's a lot of information to get on this event. So I encourage you, if you're in District two and want to get an update from the people you've elected or people that work for you from the county building, to come with your constructive questions. It is from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Blanchard Area Community Center. Seating is going to be limited. There is a lot of people that have an interest in showing up, so I encourage that. I will be working with Clark Fork continually with their community center and I think it's every Wednesday once a month, we'll be working with their center in terms of what they're doing in their community to help give some different ideas. I do have an AEG update. Our Attorney General has put us a little bit farther back on coming up because Bonner County has a number of AEG inquiries that have been submitted. And so they do not want to come to Bonner County until they've closed out all of those inquiries and then kind of fully understand what they want to educate Bonner County on. They're hoping that those items get cleared up in the next two weeks. Once all of those are closed out, then I'll have a date. It is not likely that they will visit us in April. I know that some responses have been returned, but I believe that they have two or three still pending on different issues whether, so I don't know all about the items that ha- that they're waiting on. I just know that, that was their answer today is they know we're waiting for our date. As far as the item brought up by Mr. Kelly, I will actually ask that that be put on the agenda so we get a clear understanding. I differ in that on the town hall section, that nine to 10, I think it's reasonable to do some question and answer. I don't think that, I, I understand not doing the back and forth from the end of business meeting, but the town hall could, the whole point is to get some answers and I think it can potentially reduce the frustration that happens on the business side of the meeting if we give some meaningful input back and forth. And it'll allow the community to help train your commissioners on the way you want to be represented and to show that we're listening to what the issues are because we're not always going to agree, but we can give an answer and kind of give an understanding of how we make some of our opinions. So that is all I have for an update for you today.
District three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. District three, I've been working on fairgrounds and the, there is not a fairground game. Last week, we received an email from, and I have a couple copies up here if anybody wants some of them, I don't know how many I have left, but, and this is from Tiffany Brunson who is the North Region Grants Specialist. And I'm going to cut out the parts that talk about IDAPA and 400, but if you would like a copy, you can email me and ask me for a copy. All right. Hello. Idaho Parks and Recreation Grants Department is aware that the location and construction of the proposed 34-site RV campground at the Bonner County Fairgrounds has become a point of contention. We would like to clarify a few points and inform Bonner County of the issues of concern that we have. Regarding the grant funds, all our grants are reimbursable grants per IDAPA 26.01.31 Section 4 reimbursement of project costs. The grantee must initially pay all project costs and then seek reimbursement through the department. If funds are expended but the project is withdrawn or otherwise not completed in accordance with the grant agreement, we will not reimburse those costs. Regarding the proposed location, if the original property identified in the grant application is not free of encumbrances and you propose to move it, that doesn't mean you fail to meet the grant requirement. We can adjust the location with a simple amendment to the grant agreement as long as the project is completed in accordance with the grant agreement and scope of what kind goes into IDAPA, which I'm going to skip and more IDAPA stuff if I'm going to skip. At this point, we have concerns about the timeline and cost of this proposed project. A grant extension is not guaranteed, but subject to the state's assessment of the ability of the applicants to comply with the rules and regulations and the likelihood that the proposed project will complete within the timeline and budget. The budget for this project is $498,315 with $473,315 in grant funds and $25,000 in match from the Bonner County Fair. The scope and work, the scope of work, excuse me, and budget in the application commit to a gravel surface roadway of 34 RV camp spaces, 8B and cold foods. Water service lines and an electrical system will be installed with water and electric hookups for all 34 spaces. A sewer service line will also be installed to service a proposed future restroom facility. Fire hydrants will be installed. IDPR has serious concerns that the work committed to can be accomplished within budget and within the project timeline, even with a one-year extension, given the current lack of movement on the project. If the project has not been put out to bid, an estimated cost received by Bonner County by June 2023, IDPR is concerned that the project will not complete within the necessary timeframe and within the original budget. We are extremely hesitant to approve an extension request under the current circumstances. If you require additional information about the obligations of grantees, our grant program rules, regulations, or policies or the commitments of this proposed project, please let me know. Thank you. And that's from Tiffany Brunson. So, later this afternoon, we will be, well, maybe this morning, we're going to be meeting to discuss the Fair Board in the future. There will be a joint meeting which will be scheduled this month and I look forward and I'm very focused on a couple of things with that meeting. One, the dutyary responsibility to the citizens of Bonner County. Two, having a conversation with the Fair Board, and I did deliver them copies of this correspondence last evening, and determining what the path forward is between these bodies. I believe that this is an important conversation for the future of Bonner County that needs to be had and I look forward, we will be having a joint meeting here between the Bonner County Fair Board and the Bonner County Commissioners, which we will let you know as soon as we get, we get those dates. The final things that I'm working on is there's a, there's a variety of technology issues that Bonner County is working to address in order to maintain our digital infrastructure so that we can provide services to our citizenry. As you all may well know, most payment forms to include those of our campground which are done through Reserve America and are primarily digital and do not require a significant amount of personnel are done electronically. And without electronic payment methods, it would, it could severely impact the abilities of our citizens to be able to have building location permits, road and bridge permits, pay taxes. We, we live in a digital world and making sure that we maintain our digital infrastructure is perfectly appropriate and there is going to be some conversations about that this week. And finally, there are a number of personnel issues that we are working on, but I look forward to the return of Mr. Marshall so that we can address them. Thank you.
Right. With that, we will go into airport. Dave Shook, you out there? Oh, did we do the consent agenda? Okay, well, let's do the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
All right, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And for Doug out there, Roden Bridge bought a sweeper for $15,000 that a new replacement would be in excess of $300,000 and then they had a truck repair of just over $15,000 and then changed. And that's the big purchases for the week. And then risk management had an expense. Had a roof leak, damaged prosecutor's office. ONXY Construction has been hired by Bonner County to handle the repairs, request payment And that's our big expenses, over $5,000. Roll call vote? We did? Okay, airport. Dave Shook out there? We ran out of gas. So, I'll read it for him. FAA Grant Reduction Amendment for AIP number 3-16-0033-017-2019 at Sandpoint Airport. Bonner County is requesting an amendment to the AIP number that I just read for parcels number 43, 45A, 45B, 49, and 51 have been deleted from this grant as negotiations between the landowners and the county continues. These parcels are anticipated to be included in a future AIP grant. Final grant amount will decrease from the original amount of $731,378 and will include only costs associated with the acquisition of those parcels shown in the amended description. So, I'll entertain the motion.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
It says that it was sent to auditing, but auditing didn't review it is, did it not need to be reviewed by auditing? Because he specifically wrote on there, copy to auditing, but it doesn't have auditing review check. Good. It's usually when he's come through, they vote more. Because usually when he's come through, they're both marked. Sorry, I only just noticed that, that was a check. Because I could make a motion that we approve pending audit confirmation. Can we move forward? Yeah, I'll do it.
I make a motion that we, based on the information before us, I move that the county request this amended amendment reducing the number of parcels to be acquired under this grant and that the chairman sign administratively after confirmation from auditing.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Hey, Roden Bridge.
Hey, I'm on Zoom here. Can you actually hear me?
Barely hear you.
All right, well, I'll do the first one. Matt's got a couple that he's got to do on here for our awards. But this one's for the changing of our spending authority from $5,000 to $20,000 for Roden Bridge. On January 31st, 2017, Commissioners approved Resolution 17-11, stating that departments may only pre-obligate the county to third parties in amounts at or below $5,000. This stemmed from litigation. The court has proficiently determined that the employees have the fiscal authority to obligate the county financially to third parties. It further states that any attempt by a county employee or independent contractor to pre-obligate the county in amounts over the set amount is hereby declared null and void unless expressly ratified by the county or the B O C C in a subsequent meeting conforming to Idaho's open public meeting laws. With that being said, the Roden Department, Roden Bridge Department frequently spends over $5,000 for equipment repairs, and these repairs must be completed to keep our equipment on the road for the public safety and that of our operators in a timely manner. And whereas $5,000 is insufficient for the road department to keep moving with our daily operations, our repairs, so on and so forth, it is suggested that we can actually move the spending authority and amendments for Roden Bridge to $20,000. And this would allow the Roden Bridge Director and the Assistant Director of the Department to have the ability to approve such expenditures. Please see the attached amendment.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve Resolution 23-28, stating Roden Bridge may only pre-obligate the county to third parties in the amounts at or below $20,000, so long as they have budget authority.
I second the motion, but I have a question on seeing no check mark from legal. Was there an issue, there's not an, I agree with the increase, but was there an issue that legal should have also confirmed that $20,000 wasn't there?
I actually checked with Bill Wilson on that, and he said he would actually support me all the way to $50,000.
Okay. All right, I second the motion.
All right, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and the reason for that is if Roden Bridge wild truck breaks down in the wintertime, they've got to get it fixed right then. They can't pay the repair until it's posted for a week. Then it got to come before the board to get approved. And then the guy is okay to go ahead and start on the work. In the meantime, you've got a truck that's down for a week or two when it needs to be rolling. And we do not have the excess in Roden Bridge vehicles to afford that luxury. So that was the reason for this increase. Motion passes. And next item.
Good morning. Matt Mulvey, step in here for Roden Bridge. Item number two is the award of our annual magnesium chloride purpose.
We opened bids on March 27th, and we received two bids. And the low bid was from GMCO Incorporated for a total amount of $639,040 at a unit price of $159.76 per ton. So this is for 4,000 tons of magnesium chloride, which is what we use to treat gravel roads that have over 100 vehicles per day traffic. It helps to stabilize the material, reduce dust, and keep all that gravel on the roads where it belongs. And it should be noted that these prices reflect a 20% increase over the prices from 2022. And so we are stealing some money from some of our other budget line items in order to cover this, because it is important that we get the 4,000 tons. So with that, I turn it over to the board.
I move to award a contract for 4,000 tons of magnesium chloride to GMCO Incorporated with a unit price submitted for a total amount of $639,040.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Number three.
Roden Bridge is requesting approval to advertise for asphalt projects for 2023. We are wanting to put this out to bid, and this would place new asphalt on East Dufort Road from Highway 95 to Tulatche Road and on short sections of South Sagal Road, Bear Paw Road, and Peterson Road, just on the hills coming up that pose a lot of maintenance issues keeping the gravel in place on the steep hills.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this notice of advertisements for the Bonner County Asphalt Projects 2023.
I second the motion.
Call in favor? Roll, roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Lewis. H R, item one.
Good morning. Alicia Clark for the record, Senior H R Generalist. Bonner County is requesting approval to recruit for the following position, EMS Chief Deputy Paramedic. This has been a historical position for EMS, but it's not currently being utilized. It is a vac, it was vacated previously. EMS is requesting to recreate this position. EMS has the existing budget for the position.
Based on the information before us, I move to approve, commencing with approval of a recreated position for Chief Deputy EMS effective April of 2023.
I second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Now we will go to...
I'll do it since it went under. So it's, I-CRIMP is a program that Bonner County used to be in and we're no longer in. So we went down to Idaho Association of Counties meeting, and we were able to get a presentation from them. They came up and visited with us again, I think it was last Monday. And so the request that I have before the board is that the board approve a decision to move forward with having I-CRIMP give the board a quote of what they could offer our county. It's not binding. It's just asking them to do the necessary work so that we can do a reasonable compare and contrast and make sure that we, as a board, are making the best decision for all departments with respect to management of risk. So I move that we allow I-CRIMP, Idaho County's Risk Management Pool, to proceed with providing a quote for liability insurance for the 2023-24 fiscal year.
I would second the motion.
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And it is 10:39 in 45 seconds, and we will recess this and go upstairs for executive session. And we'll recess it for 10 minutes.